Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting, the 37th meeting of fiscal year 2024. At this time, I'd like to now call the meeting to order. If we can begin by introducing the members of the Board and our staff first.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
And on Zoom, we have Sean.
Sean Faganey, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And staff this evening, we have on Zoom, Tim.
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Cheyenne.
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
And with us in the room, we have Julia.
Julia Getman-Clerk.
Great, thank you so much. At this time, we are actually going to move up. We have an item of old business, number five. We're actually, for the convenience of the residents, could move that to the earlier, to move that up on the agenda. The item would be executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, Discussion Strategy with Respect to Litigation, entitled Bacardi et al. versus Milton Planning Board et al., Norfolk Superior Court, Civil Action Number 2482 CV 00515. At this time, I would like to make, I would move to make a motion to adjourn from open session into executive session for a discussion regarding strategy with respect to litigation, entitled Bacardi et al. versus Milton Planning Board et al., Norfolk Superior Court, Civil Action Number 2482 CV 00515. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Planning Board. The Planning Board will return to open session following Executive Board to complete our meeting and hold First Citizens Speak. If I could have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, and we need to do a roll call because Sean is on Zoom. Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, and we will be back shortly. Okay, and we are back. Moving on to our administrative items. We first have approval of minutes. There's one set of minutes, but I don't know if that's the one that you sent out today that I'm not sure if members have had a chance to look at.
It was May 9th, I think that went out.
May 9th.
No, May 6th.
I'm sorry, May 6th.
I looked at May 6th, and I'm okay with them.
May 6th.
Yes, that was a short.
Shorty.
Yes, and I had read that, and I was good with those.
Same here.
All right, so then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 6th meeting as amended.
Second.
Roll call, all right. Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, the minutes are approved. And the next, the next item is our discussion of next meeting dates. And as I was looking, I realized I actually have a conflict on the 11th, which is when we were supposed to have Josh come back. He cannot come on the 10th. He can come any day the following week. And my apologies for this, that I don't know if members, or if we, Tim, did you happen to ask about either Monday or Tuesday?
He's apparently out of town until, I think the 11th is the first day that he's back. So it's the 11th or the following week for him.
How does that following week look? That would be a back-to-back meeting, week to week, being July 11th and then the 20, or excuse me, it would be that following week and the 25th. So it would be the 18th possibly?
I'm sorry, 11th and the, I'm sorry.
So instead of the 11th, we would meet on the 18th?
18th and the 25th?
And the 25th?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's okay with me.
All right. Sean, is that, would that work for you?
I think I can make it work. I have a, I have a meeting, but I think I can, on the 18th I do, so I think I can make it work though.
Okay, and Tim, that would be okay with you?
I, I think so. Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything.
All right.
So we, on the 18th, it would be Josh Fiala from MAPC?
Yes, and that would be the East Milton overlay.
Okay, so I just, can I just add something about that?
Sure.
We had a Master Plan Implementation Committee meeting last night, and we were talking about the initiatives that the committee had funded and just wanting to like get updates on those things, and this one came up. So I mean, one way to handle it is to invite the MPIC members to that, to that meeting, so that they can hear directly from Josh. And if that's the case, then we'd have to post it, you know, for that, so as a joint meeting, at least for that portion. So is that okay with everyone?
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, good idea.
So Cheyenne, can you send an email out, or I can send it out, to see, to alert members to the 18th?
And invite the Master Plan Implementation Committee to attend.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, thank you all for that. So it would be, again, the 18th and the 25th of July, the next meeting dates. Okay, and Tim, an update if you'd like to provide? The Director of Planning and Community Development.
The main item that I was going to update on actually became an agenda item. So we'll talk about that a little bit later regarding the Milton Marketplace Site Plan Approval. So we'll, we'll talk about that when it comes up on the agenda. But the other thing I just wanted to mention, the Planning Board had heard an A&R application for 95 Dexter Street, and the request had been to update that plan with some notations that we typically have on A&R plans. I just got that updated plan from the surveyor yesterday afternoon. So whenever we decide, we decide to meet on July 18th, that'll be back on the agenda, hopefully for a quick thumbs up from the Board, and we'll get that, that one on its way over to the applicants. So preview of coming attractions, but that's it for now.
Okay.
Tim, can I, can I just go back to that for a moment? I, my recollection, I think it says it in the meeting minutes, that we conveyed the approval of that to you. Does that need to come back, or is there a reason to come back? But that's, that's my recollection from the meeting, and that's what's in the minutes also.
I, I thought that we wanted to see the plan with, with the updated notations. I'll go, I'll go back and check the tape, you know, just to, just to double-check on that.
Okay.
So if it winds up not being on the agenda, then, then that's why. We'll, we'll take care of that on a staff level. But I, I, I thought that we had wanted to just see it again, just to make sure that everything was on there. But we'll, we'll double-check on that.
Yeah, if the other members felt that that's what we said, please. I don't want to, I don't want to prevent that, but that was my recollection.
Yeah, I thought it was just to make sure those hash marks that are sort of splitting the lot in thirds didn't mean anything. There wasn't an easement or anything, but other than that, I thought it was good to go.
Yeah, I did think they were going to come back to us one more time. I think we were going to have them just.
I think the applicant, as they left, said, "We have to come back."
Yeah, I do remember that. And I said, "We'll be quick." Yeah, "We'll be brief," but I think we did, yeah.
Okay.
All right. We would have to let them know that, of that date change, obviously.
And Tim, I just was going to mention the A&R that we approved, which was on the Canton-Milton line, the property on Brushhill Road. The Canton Planning Board met last night, and I don't know what their decision was. Just curious if you, if you might want to check in, I don't know, with the Town of Canton and see what, what decision they made, because it was contingent upon both towns approving the A&R.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check in. Cheyenne, did you talk with one of the, one of the Canton residents who had been involved in that? And as of that conversation, I think it was two days ago, because the, the Planning Board had heard that at a previous meeting, and I guess continued it. I didn't know they were meeting last night, so we'll, we'll check in on them.
Yeah. If they made a decision, I don't know if they made a final decision or continued their public hearing, but they were meeting on it last night. So just curious what they decided. Okay, great. So we can now move next to.
I wonder if I can hear you.
Oh, there you go. We can now move on to Citizens Speak. We don't have anyone in the public. Is there anyone, Sean, on Zoom? Or, Tim, do you see anyone?
If anyone out there would like to speak, feel free to put your hands up. But I don't see any hands right now.
Three to 10, please, no hands raised.
Okay, great. It's a big TV night, so. So then we'll move on to our new business discussion of the Planning Board approach to reviewing and commenting on CPA applications. And we just put, we put this on because we've had a couple of people with different projects who would like to come before us. I know we talked last year about, and we welcome anyone to come before us and talk about their projects. But in, in writing letters of recommendation, we just want to be consistent with different folks. Cheryl, you're now on it, so you can see, some people come in with letters, some don't. It doesn't mean that one project is necessarily superior to another, but, you know, because a lot of these projects are all really good projects. So does anyone in the Board have a sense? I don't know if the CPC committee has talked about this. If you're, because it had been in the past that they suggested that people get letters. And so some people really actively got letters, others didn't really know and didn't have as many, but.
The CPC met me while I was away also, so I don't know if it came up at that meeting, but Julia was there, no. With the, with the new chair, I don't think there's been an emphasis on getting the letters this, this year. I think there's a lot more applicants, so it's a lot, it would be a lot. Like I think I said in the past, that if one applicant afforded an opportunity, they all should be. And there's like, what, 20-some applicants this time? So it would be a lot, and we kind of, it would almost be in some way be a little bit duplicative of the review that the committee does, because the committee first has to review whether they meet the criteria, eligibility criteria. And then after that, just sort of weigh, there's a lot more requests than there's funding available. So then it becomes a decision, you know, based on, you know, how ready is the project? We've talked about making sure that there's some distribution across town in terms of if it's recreational, if it's a repeat applicant or they're new applicants, you know, just kind of, because the committee's, you know, fairly new and now having some applicants from the first round that haven't, were seeking updates, how quickly are they moving ahead? Because we want to see things happen. So I guess there's a lot that goes into it in terms of what the recommendation would be. And of course, the committee thinks that they're all, you know, valid. I mean, even if they don't meet the eligibility, they're still, you know, interesting and wonderful ideas that people are presenting. So it's, I don't think there's the emphasis on the letters so much. I think some people have gotten them, because maybe they were, you know, kind of advised to do so in prior applications. But I can ask at the next meeting, you know, what, what the, if the committee's going to take some kind of position, you know, like to give more support to somebody, an applicant who has these letters? I wouldn't want to disadvantage someone either. So why don't we, if that's okay, I can ask at the next meeting, and we can bring it up. Because it's going to be now, so the eligibility phase is now, it's finishing, and then it's going, they'll be invited, those who are deemed eligible, which is most of them, but not all, they'll be invited to submit a more complete proposal, and then we'll start to review those. So it's not as if we're making any decisions yet. And there's still opportunity, like last year, even once we started reviewing the applications, we asked for more material, and they were able to submit it. So there's, Julia, how, those next rounds is going to be due when?
September 27.
Yeah, September 27.
So the applicants would come to us looking for our support, but we don't necessarily vet them? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, that's the confusion.
That is confusing.
But we've asked, we've written, you know, support for, Andy DiMatto came, for example, for the watering station at Andrews Park, and we wrote a letter on that behalf. There have been others. Sean has a, someone who has wanted to, he recommended, you know, or asked if they could come forth, and it's a really incredible project. And then someone else approached also, somebody who's also put in another application. And I've told both of them that they can come to our next meeting, so I still would honor, you know, and welcome anyone to come, talk about what their projects are. But it's because the CPC weighs in on it, you know, do we want to add letters, is, is I guess our decision.
So I think, oh, sorry, Maggie.
Oh, no. So I would think that maybe the only projects or proposals that may want to come to us is land use, you know, that we might have an opinion on, you know. Even though Andy DiMatto, you know, came for the water, that doesn't change the use of the park. He's adding an amenity to the park, so it's not changing.
Yeah, but what if it's building?
The park status. So that's, so if it's, so that's what my thinking is. If it's a change of something on the use of land, because we're the Planning Board, and we're supposed to be looking at all the parcels in town.
A lot of them are on land.
And.
I don't know.
There's a lot, a lot of parks and rec in these applications. There's a couple that are more environmental.
So maybe that's like, maybe we don't really have a say in parks and recs.
So it's really the Parks Department. And every, like, I'm the representative for the Board, and they have, the Parks Department has a representative, Affordable Housing Trust has a representative, the Housing Authority has a representative, you know. So there's lots of, CONCOM has a representative. So there's lots of, so like, the Historical Commission has a representative, so each category, the three categories, you know, the open space and parks and recreation, the historic preservation and affordable housing, have people there that are representative of the Boards. So it seems like if you, if we do it, then do we ask CONCOM to do it? And do we ask Affordable Housing Trust to do it? And it seems like it's going to become a lot longer process, you know, for the CPC.
I would think it would be a shorter process, because they're only asking the Board that's relevant. So they don't have to come to us for the water cooler, you know. So they go to the parks and recs. So they're saving, the applicants are saving time.
Streamlining.
They're streamlining it. So the only proposals that would come to us, for our opinion, is if it affects land. So like the DCR project, if the Town of Milton wants to lease it, that I think should come to the Planning Board, because that is a land use issue. You know, and if there's another parcel of land that, you know, we want to look at, I think it should come to us.
So for example, that one is adjacent to land that the town owns that's under the Parks jurisdiction. So that, you know, the idea there that they had was like recreational use, so it would more be parks, you know, so.
But it's adjacent to it, it is not.
The idea that they have was to use the, to tie it together for a community recreational kind of purpose. But, you know, you'd have to look at the, I'd like to suggest that I take it back, because, you know, every other representative should also have a similar kind of.
Because I know the Historical Commission gets asked to weigh on things that may have historic stone walls or a historic garden.
Right, so that I do understand, but the Historic Department, Commission didn't weigh in on the water cooler, my guess was.
Right, that's what, to your point, that's what I was saying, yeah.
But I think the committee should have a position on it, because there's representatives from each of the Board. And let the committee come back to each, like, so CONCOM would get the same, you know, strategy, historic, et cetera. Rather than the Planning Board having, deciding for itself, you know, the committee. All right, so I'll take it to the committee. And Julia, when's the next meeting?
15th.
The 15th, okay.
So that'll be before our next meeting?
Yes.
Because I have told, yeah, both.
So if there's an applicant, yeah, so if an applicant has something they're interested in doing on a parcel of land, then I think that's appropriate to come to us.
I imagine that the applicant for the DCR property would come to the Planning Board. They actually reached out to me about coming to the panel.
That's one of them, that's one of the people I invited to come to our next meeting.
Okay, and, you know, and I don't, again, you know, I don't have a problem necessarily. I just have found it a little bit awkward when, like, last year even with Andy DiMatto, it was like, you don't want to prejudice somebody else either, right? So.
That's why we're just wanting to, Tim was saying, we had said last year we were going to try to find a way to be fair and consistent.
Right, okay.
I always think we listen to everybody and then just either render an opinion or no opinion. You say, you know, "This doesn't apply to us," so we appreciate your presentation.
And they're all such good projects, it's really just so hard.
But if somebody would want to come to us, I would imagine we would, we would let them.
And the benefit of people coming here is we are kind of must-see TV. So the town would get an understanding of what projects are being proposed. So I don't know how many, what the audience level is like for the CP meetings.
Do they get recorded?
They get recorded, but they don't.
They don't get posted?
They're not still, they're not like on TV.
So it'd be good to share, yeah.
My only point about it is that, you know, it's a lot of applicants. Again, I don't, I don't want to prejudice anyone, because this goes, does go to town meeting, you know, with the recommendation of the CPC. And it's the CPC's job to review them and make the recommendation. So we don't want to like confuse folks about what they need to do if they only have so much, you know, time and commitment. Like, there's playground folks, and there's, you know, it's, for some people, like, these meetings and making presentations and preparing the materials is all new to them. So just adding another thing for them to do might be like, I don't want to discourage anybody, you know, to think that they've got too much work to do.
It wouldn't be mandatory, right? They just come if they want, right? They don't have to come before the Planning Board and get our letter of recommendation.
Yeah, but if they, if they think that you've got to get us a letter of support because the next applicant's getting one, you know, it just adds a level of stress to something.
Sounds like college applications.
Great, okay. Does that sound good, Sean? Does that make sense?
Yeah, certainly, yeah.
All right, so the next item is the discussion of the letter to Milton Marketplace regarding site plan amendment for the second-floor enclosure. Tim, if you want to just give a little background, if you don't mind, that would be great.
Yeah, so, folks, I, this is the first time, I think, that we've met since, since the Select Board meeting where this occurred. But there was a presentation from a potential lessee of the former plate space in the Milton Marketplace, you know, giving what was essentially an informational presentation to the Select Board in anticipation of a future, I assume, common vic license hearing and a liquor license hearing. And, you know, if you watched that presentation or saw some of the images or saw some of the chatter on social media after, you know, the proposal incorporates into the larger restaurant space the enclosed patio that the Planning Board had recently approved via a site plan amendment. And this caught several folks' attention, Meredith and Cheryl included. You know, I, I think everyone remembers the discussion that we had in those public hearings about, you know, what is the purpose of, you know, of the enclosure? What is the purpose of the secondary means of egress? And I think a big issue that the Board had was, you know, are we talking about some type of expanded use in that space as opposed to sort of the general purpose use of the patio for, you know, people going to the plate, people getting lunch at the fruit center, people just hanging out on the patio, a space for that entire building? A, a restaurant space kind of encompassing that, you know, combining the plate space and the patio space is not what the Board approved. And so we've had a number of conversations, you know, Meredith and myself, myself and Town Council, Meredith and Cheryl and myself and Town Council, and, you know, Meredith, and I don't want to speak for her, but she's also been corresponding with the applicant. I've been speaking with Marion McKetrick, who's the attorney for the potential lessee of that space. So there's just been a lot of discussion around, you know, what is the nature of the approval that the Planning Board gave? Is it consistent with these new proposals that are being put out there? You know, and, and I think ultimately, you know, was the Planning Board misled in, in the assertions that it got around, you know, what this enclosed space with this second staircase would be used for? Or are we dealing with a situation where, you know, there's been some fluid decision-making and, you know, things come up for a business owner, and, you know, what was true six months ago is no longer true today? But ultimately, what we're dealing with is, you know, what is the Planning Board's role here? And are these proposals consistent with, with the site plan approval? I, I don't know if I included it in the meeting materials folder, but I do have a compilation of all of the recent site plan approvals and amendments for this space that the Planning Board has given. And, you know, it's, it's pretty clear to me that the approved site plans, you know, the plans themselves have a note on them that say that the patio space is for general purpose use for patrons of the Milton Marketplace building. The decision around the enclosure also, you know, notes that, you know, there's going to be a physical enclosure of a space, and the space has typically been used for, you know, the general use of, of all of the businesses and patrons of the Milton Marketplace. So, you know, where, where I've landed on all of this, you know, in relation to what is the kind of permitting pipeline for this new proposal, is that there would need to be a further site plan amendment to basically go from 49 seats of general purpose open to all patrons and businesses in the Milton Marketplace to exclusive use for one business, which is, as far as we know, based on the presentation at the Select Board, is, is what's being proposed. And so I think, you know, and I had a conversation with Meredith and Town Council about this, you know, the other day, and, and this is kind of now the pitch to the Board, is that, you know, a, a site plan amendment hearing would give the Board the opportunity to weigh in on all of the usual issues that it would weigh in on, you know, when we talk about a restaurant use. And, and the Board has done it before, you know, they did it with Abbey Park, they did it with Navara. You know, all of the restaurants around town have gone through a site plan review process, which, you know, the, the, the hearings for the physical space today have, have also gone through that process, but not really with the rigor that you would expect from a restaurant use, you know, because, you know, the assertions have been, the use isn't changing, we're just putting four walls and a roof over it and attaching a staircase to it. So, you know, there's been a lot of, I think, you know, a lot of questions, a lot of tension. And I, I think, you know, requesting or informing the, the, the potential applicant that the Planning Board believes that an amendment of the site plan is necessary, you know, let's talk about getting an application in, I think would kind of hit a little bit of a reset button on, on a lot of. on, on a lot of the questions and kind of, you know, issues that have been swirling about, you know, since this news came out. You know, because again, the Planning Board, you know, typically weighs in on, you know, adequacy of the parking and the circulation and, you know, weighing in on all the needs of the, you know, the, the potential users of a new business, you know, under, under site plan review and in addition to all the other physical impacts. The Board has not had a chance to do that. There are other opportunities. There'd be a Board of Appeals hearing, there'd be a Select Board hearing. But really, you know, the Planning Board has a certain lane in these things that, you know, I, I think needs to be asserted. And, you know, as I'm talking, I'm realizing that, you know, there's been a number of side conversations, but hopefully everyone knows what I'm, I'm talking about. Because again, this is the first time we've met since, since a lot of this stuff has gone down. So understand if this is all very whirlwind. You know, Meredith obviously has been knee-deep in this as well and can probably, you know, answer any questions or provide additional clarity. So I'll leave it at that for now and we can, we can continue the conversation.
So I don't know if all the members were able to watch the Select Board meeting. It was the two weeks, two weeks ago. And it was quite a surprise to see that the applicant had come to us and explicitly said that they were not, there would be no expansion beyond the 49 seats. A matter of fact, I was so concerned following our, that the day after we approved the staircase, the plate announced that their lease was not being renewed or they had come to an agreement not to renew the lease. Seemed a little bit coincidental to me, and I was really concerned. So I asked the applicant to come back in from Ten Bassett Street and to confirm what we had approved, because we'd verbally approved it, but we hadn't signed off on it yet. Before we signed off, I wanted to make sure, and Cheryl had explicitly asked a number of times, this second egress gives you the opportunity to increase and have an enlarged restaurant or seating area capacity beyond the 49 seats. And we were told that is not the case. This is for the same, it's basically enclosing and just an additional access for convenience, but there was no expansion. And then watching the Select Board where an incredible proposal with a large bar being proposed, I think 37 seats, very minimal tables, definitely going for, looking for a certain theme. And I respect the, you know, that everyone has their business and I don't, we want to support our businesses. And I, that should be said before anything. But, but to feel misled, and I know things change, the decision process, but we explicitly said, if, if there is expansion, you need to come back to us for parking. You know, we need to discuss parking. There's other things that we would weigh in on, on a site plan approval. So that being said, I feel strongly that they need to come in for an amended site plan. I have concerns about the proposal up there. It was just, it's not an application yet, it's a proposal. And it will go before the ZBA and the Select Board because beyond just the parking, I, there's, I have some concerns about how the other businesses will operate on that level, have access to restrooms, have, you know, access to the elevator. There's different, you know, issues that, that all need to be thought through. So, but I don't know if others have gotten to see that. And Cheryl, you, you watched that meeting, so, and as an architect and having asked specifically about that second egress, I would love to hear your comments.
Right, I, I mean, I did contact Meredith right away. And I said, wow, this is really striking. Because I did probe, I think, I was sort of asking more than once about it. And I, I know from being an architect and having clients, they just don't go forward with construction projects on a whim. You know, there's reasons behind it. And that's why I kept asking, did the building department say that you need the second means? Are you looking to expand the seating? You know, so, because there was, there had to be a reason to add a stair. And I think you all also probably have been there and seen the stair. What I was concerned about at the bottom of the stair, how you're right on top of that parking space, it came to real, it's, that is the reality. My fear is the reality now. So I definitely think, I mean, if that stair's going to get used a lot, that needs a site plan approval, that needs a review. And that's separate from the things that Meredith said, just... So, you know, I've been on the Board long enough to have reviewed a number of applications here, you know, for this building, and some of them went forward and some of them didn't. And it's, it's wonderful to have the business there. So it's not about trying to be difficult. But, you know, we do, I think, you know, need to have, be clear that what our expectations are, and in this case, that I, I do think it's a different enough use from what we were told, that it does need to come back.
Yeah, and I did watch the Selectman's meeting, and I was a little surprised, too. But I have a question, though. This building is in a residential district, and we are contemplating making it part of our commercial district. Does that affect the review process? Because if it's in the commercial district, would they still have to come to us for site plan approval?
So the question really would be, do they have to go to the Board of Appeal anymore? So, because they would definitely have to come to the Planning Board. But now, so, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I think, I mean, my take on, so the, the first part of Maggie's question, they would still need, generally speaking, irrespective of where you are, the, the, the trigger for a site plan review is multifamily or 800 square feet or more of change to a commercial building. Now, the 800 square feet of change to this commercial building was the enclosure, right? That's why that came back for site plan amendment. Whether it's in a residential district or a commercial district, doesn't matter. It's, it's the actual work that's being done. So, so this project, you know, again, irrespective of what, you know, what's going on, would, would, would still be, you know, site plan review. Now, whether a change in the underlying zoning would, would cut out the Board of Appeals, the, the Fruit Center, the Milton Marketplace, you know, operates under a special permit from the Board of Appeals. You know, that is what they're operating under. And so, you know, I, I don't know what the process of, if there's a zoning change, does, you know, you would need to unwind that special permit and then, you know, reapply under, so it'd have to be like a new project there would then be governed by, by, by the new zoning. You know, I, I think because, you know, there's so much in that special permit that has informed, you know, how that thing operates right now. And I don't think an underlying zoning change completely wipes that out. I don't want to speak with 100% authority on that. If that's a real concern, you know, we can obviously talk to Town Council and get their opinion. But, you know, just like, just like anything else, you know, we do, we do overlay zoning all the ti, well, not all the time, but we do it. And that, you know, that, that, that goes on top of the existing zoning. It doesn't wipe out the existing zoning. It doesn't wipe out the existing approvals under previous, you know, zoning. So, you know, that would be my instinct on this, but, you know, we can obviously follow up on that if that's a concern.
Yeah, because that was, the parking is my concern. So in the commercial district, you don't have to provide parking?
No, you have to provide parking.
Or you only provide minimal parking?
I don't think it's minimal parking either. At least, at least right now, it's not minimal parking.
Okay, so we wouldn't be, the Milton Marketplace, if it was, became commercial, and maybe this isn't the time for the discussion, but then they, would they be able to reduce the amount of parking spaces they, they currently have?
If it would become residential.
If it became commerc, so it's residential now, and if it can, if it became commercial, would they be able to reduce the amount of...
So their parking requirements are handled also at the ZBA currently? And with the restaurants, they all are too? Because none of, I think that's a, is that a requirement in the zoning, Tim? That restaurants are handled by the ZBA?
Yeah.
I mean, the...
I'd have to, I'd have to go and see what, if that's a use that has a parking requirement or if it's, there, there are a number of uses that are considered permissive that kind of go straight to the ZBA for those things. So I'd have to go check.
For example, Milton Village overlay, restaurants are handled separately than any other commercial. And I think that was because that's the way the, the rest of the zoning is with respect to restaurants. So we'd have to go back and, and check that.
But I think, again, again, to Maggie's question, you know, if there was a change that they proposed, you know, to put up a new building or to change their building somehow under the new zoning, then that would be, you know, that, any new parking requirements in that zoning would apply. But just because the zoning overlay is created doesn't change the fact that the existing permit that they have requires a certain amount of parking. So there wouldn't be just a snap change like that. They would need to propose a change under the new zoning, which, you know, potentially could cut into the parking that they have for their existing business. So it's not, you know, it's, there's, there's safeguards there, I guess is what I would say.
So, I mean, I would say that if we approved a general shared space of 49 seats, and now they want to put a restaurant there with a bar, for them to not have to come back to us would, would kind of undermine the authority of the Board, correct? I mean...
It would be nice for the, in a friendly way, to invite them back and feel...
I, I think it requires an amended site plan approval, not just a friendly comeback. If they're going to proceed with that as a use, I, I know they have other procedures and processes they would have to go through. And sometimes when we, it requires ZBA and Planning Board, we know the two Boards kind of work their schedules together. Now you have a liquor license thrown in with the Select Board, so I don't know how that goes. But I do know that I was made aware by one of our former Planning Board members about when the liquor license was granted to the plate or for the use at the plate, there was neighborhood support because the, of the hours. I mean, the, apparently the license did have some longer hours, but what was planned, you know, was not into the, into the evening hours because of proximity to residential properties. So, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces here, the sort of the, you know, what goes along with a liquor license and the hours that goes along with that, what the ZBA jurisdiction is and what ours is. But I do think it's different from what we were, what the application was for the site plan approval. And so if they do wish to proceed with that use, then I think it requires an amendment.
And so my understanding also with the plate, they had a full liquor license, which was beer and hard alcohol, but they didn't, it wasn't fully utilized. I think they might have had, like, Bloody Marys or something on occasion. But, so I think it's different having a, a business taking, using the full liquor license for the rest, for a restaurant business, for, to your point, show longer hours.
Or a bar business.
Yeah, it's a bar business, it's a bar. And so that sort of is a little bit of concern, too. So now, do you, and again, I don't know the correct process, but do we, like, withdraw? Is that what we do? Withdraw the approval that was given and they come back with a new one? Or can you even withdraw?
So, so the, the zoning by, and this is something, you know, keep this in your back pocket for future approvals. The zoning bylaw gives the Planning Board the right to modify or rescind a site plan approval if it gives itself that right in the, in, in the decision document. So basically, if the decision says the Planning Board can modify ba, 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 this, you know, when it wants, you can do that. We have not done that in, in these site plan approvals and frankly have not typically done them in many site plan approvals. We may want to, you know, the Board may want to think about reserving for itself that right in the future. But I think where we are now, and, and again, I, I had a conversation with, with Marion McHetrick, who's representing, you know, the applicant, you know, for the new space. They are still kind of mapping out their approval kind of pathway. I think they have an idea of what they, what they need. And I, I think when we, you know, when we talk about writing a letter, I think the suggestion is that, you know, the Board articulates why it feels that this applicant needs to come back for an amendment to its site plan. I think, you know, that can be conveyed in conversation. I conveyed as much to Marion when I spoke with her. But I think, you know, as a, you know, as a statement for the Board to make that like, you know, look, we've been dealing with this project for decades and, and this particular aspect of it for the past couple of years. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, you are following the, the right procedures here. And we believe that there are issues that the Planning Board needs to address via site plan amendment. And so when we talk about, you know, a kind of a friendly, you know, letter, it's, it's more, you know, hey, we saw what you want to do. Looking forward to seeing your site plan amendment application. You know, because the alternative is, you know, messier. Either, you know, the Planning Board is going to other Boards or, you know, we're kind of talking to Town Council about, you know, what the options are. I think, you know, them, you know, I don't, I don't want to use the term voluntarily because we feel they're required to do it, so they should do it. But, you know, making it, you know, a situation where it's like, if you weren't aware that this is, you know, required of you, we're making you aware, you know, let's schedule a public hearing, you know, when, when you're ready.
Tim, does, would typically the building commissioner determine that site plan approval is required? Or does it up to the applicant and their attorneys that they, they know that?
I mean, so, so the, the very literal formal procedure is they go to the building commissioner for a building permit, and the building commissioner says you need site plan approval from the Planning Board, go to the Planning Board. As a practical matter, you know, it's usually pretty cut and dried that like, you're going to need site plan approval. So you kind of don't even bother applying for the building permit and getting that, you know, effectively rejection letter. You just go straight to the Planning Board. So this is a situation where, you know, again, you know, the, the next step, if, if this is, you know, if, and I, I hate to sort of speculate because I feel, I feel like, you know, tension is here and it can really be down here, you know, once all is said and done. But, you know, if, if, if a letter is sent to this applicant and they're like, eh, we don't think that we need site plan approval, then I think the next step is, you know, making the pitch to the building commissioner, saying like, you know, look, we think that you shouldn't be issuing any building permits for this until you get an amended site plan. You know, I, I don't think it will or should come to that, but that would be kind of the, the leverage point, you know, in, in this situation.
I would think a CC to the building commissioner on the letter would make sense as a heads-up. So I support a letter making our position known to not just the applicant, but to the building commissioner, that we feel as if, if, if a restaurant as proposed at the Select Board meeting is something that's pursued. I mean, they may, that may get, that may shift, I guess. But anything that combines that common space with the other leased space, I think we could make that as sort of, doesn't matter the numbers necessarily, but that's a change near, what came to us as a common space now becoming something else. I think that can be the trigger.
There's been a change of use.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would say send that letter to the Select Board and the ZBA also.
Yes.
Not just the building commissioner.
Yeah.
Kind of upset about this one. This isn't, this isn't good.
It's put us in an awkward position, unfortunately.
Well, I think so, too, because, you know, it, I'd prefer to have something where a vision is presented to us instead of sort of piecemeal changes that eventually are going to add up to something that we didn't anticipate along the way. Because, you know, that vision may, may have influenced our decisions along the way. So anyone, and the other applicant who's watching, hopefully is going to think about that and appreciate that. think about that and appreciate that sentiment, or that thought process that we have.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I support also that the applicant come back before the board for, you know, to me, to me, you know, I think what would be a proper standard of approval with, you know, a complete, complete set of facts, you know, known. And as I think about, I, you know, I also recognize that there was an evolving, it was an evolving business deal, so that seems to be something that was, wasn't far enough along for the applicant to explain to us what the intention was. But, you know, from my perspective, the, the work that was proposed to us for the stair is, is not so time-sensitive that it had to precede, you know, the other, the other aspects of getting this, this project moving along. It, it, it didn't need to, it certainly could have been dovetailed into whatever ultimately gets approved, you know, for, for their intended change.
So, so Sean, to that point, you know, a patio application, an enclosure application, a stair application. Now, like, you know, an applicant has these approvals in hand when they go to the ZBA. It's different than going to the ZBA before they have the stair, before they have the enclosure. And so if the business deal was still in negotiation, I think it would have been preferable to wait for the application to be comprehensive.
Yeah, that's my point. That's my point. I don't, I don't think that what came before us for approval was, was, was so time-sensitive that it needed to be done in the order that it was done. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make.
And my point about the stair was, if you, if this is really something that's required and necessary and going to be used, then you really need to think about how it lands. And so now I still think that, now that I know that there's probably a larger use intended there, I absolutely would have mandated that there, that consideration be made at the bottom of the stair. And whether the building official is going to pick up on it or not, I mean, I still think it's something that, that we can comment on in the site plan approval.
It could be problematic, yeah. Dangerous. Okay, all right.
So who's going to draft the letter?
Tim, do you want to take a, work on a, a draft that you can circulate and we could add comments to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put something together, and we'll have that, I think with, maybe with enough time for people to give it a good, close look before the next meeting.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be lengthy. I think it can be pretty.
It won't be, don't worry.
Stated.
Tim, can you also circulate that packet of information that you had regarding this?
Yeah, it's, it's really just, I, I have an email that I've been passing around with just all of the decisions and plans associated with them attached, just so they're all in place. I'll send that along to everybody.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. And Cheyenne did that work, bringing together all the copies of minutes and the clips from the meeting times. And so Cheyenne, thank you for all that work. You pulled that together really quickly, so thank you.
No problem.
That's great. Okay, so do we need a motion to to vote on that, that we're sending a letter? Or are we all, we're all in agreement?
I, I think, wait, wait until you see the letter.
Yes, okay. Not to draft it, so, and the minutes will reflect that, so. Okay, great. Terrific. Then we can move on to our old business. We've already gone to executive session, so now discussion of MBTA communities zoning. And when we last left off, we were making some good progress here.
So Meredith, we've actually got our friends from UTIL in the attendees. If they can raise their hands. Just, I think, for a really quick update.
Oh, that'd be great.
On what, what they've been working on.
Yes, well.
So JT Keller and Zoe Mueller, if they can be promoted. I don't have, I don't have co-host ability, so I can't do it myself.
Okay. See them? JT, you see? Are you able to promote? Sean? Or give Tim the ability to?
Oh, I just, I just got made a co-host. All right, I'm good.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
All right, Tim was able to do it now.
There we go. Thank you.
Hi there, everyone.
Hi Zoe, welcome.
Nice to see you all.
Yes.
I see you got JT too. Great. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and then JT and I are going to kind of tag-team this. We wanted to walk you through our sort of initial research into a sort of hypothetical alternative of recategorization to an adjacent community. So I'm going to walk you through what we've prepared and give you a little bit of kind of background to the, the way that we're approaching it. I do need somebody to give me screen sharing permissions.
Tim, can you do that?
I think you should be good.
Yep, all good. Okay, great. All right, so I won't dwell on this too much. This is kind of just a reference if we need to go back to it, but as a reminder, there are kind of different, in the, in the way that the guidelines are set up, they have given these different categories of communities different kind of methods of calculating to get to the definition of reasonable size that spits out the different kind of compliance targets that you have to meet. So right now, all of your compliance targets are based on that rapid transit category, and then are in, in reference to other community characteristics you have, like the number of housing units that were counted in the 2020 census, the physical area of your, your town as a whole, and the developable station area, which we'll get into a little bit more later. So I want you to just kind of, as a preview, focus here on the, the rapid transit and the adjacent community categories. So rapid transit carries a 25% of total housing units method of calculating to get to that multifamily unit capacity, whereas adjacent has a lower percentage, 10%. So that's one of the biggest differences that you'll see as we kind of walk through this set of steps. So just as a reminder, the, kind of the, the two key sort of assumptions or steps, you could say, in, in sort of building out this hypothetical scenario. The first is presuming that the Matapan Trolley Service is equivalent to a standard bus service, and therefore it would not constitute rapid transit. I do want to just point out that in the way that the state has defined these MBTA service types, it's not really about the quality of the service, it's about the type of the service in terms of the physical infrastructure. But we're going to suspend disbelief on that for a moment, and assume that this has been recognized as sort of equivalent to bus service, and therefore all Matapan Trolley stations are not considered station areas as the law is defining them, meaning a station area that is attached to a form of transit that is rapid or commuter rail. So that's assumption one. The second one is, okay, so we're no longer in that rapid transit category. Which of the three other categories would Milton then fall into? And that's looking at the commuter rail category, the adjacent community category, and the adjacent small town. So we want to kind of walk you through those different, you know, where you fall based on this kind of like flow chart of different decisions and the, the way that the state set up the calculation methods. Before doing that, we wanted to give you a quick visual of the station areas, because I know that in, in talking with Tim, that there's been some confusion and discussion around whether you would be considered a commuter rail community, which is a logical question to have, given that you have commuter rail stops very close, just over the border. So right now, in your current designation as rapid transit, you can see this, the red bubbles here, those are the half-mile radius around your Matapan Trolley Station areas. And then the purple kind of overlay on top of that is showing you the commuter rail station areas, so half a mile from the commuter rail stations. So you can see that the majority of your station area is coming from that Matapan Trolley, and there's just a little sliver of these, these three different commuter rail ones. And then, sorry, before I move on there, and right now, you have, of that whole area, 404 acres are considered developable, meaning they're privately held land that is not kind of right-of-way, or doesn't carry other kind of restrictions like publicly held land would, and could feasibly be developed as housing at some point in the future. If we then say, okay, Matapan Trolley is now equivalent of bus, we're now only looking at those commuter rail areas. When you take just those slivers, you end up with 74 acres of land that is in Milton and is also half a mile from a commuter rail station. And this, on its own, kind of kicks you out of the commuter rail category into the other two. And the reason is because the state set a threshold for inclusion in that commuter rail community category, that you have to have at least 100 acres of a developable station area. And right now, without even going through the exercise of saying, is it developable or not, is it publicly held or not, is it a right-of-way or a parcel, you only have 74. So no matter what the split is between private and public land, developable parcels, or right-of-way, you're still below that 100-acre threshold. So you are not going to be considered a commuter rail community, because that station area doesn't, doesn't hit that, that threshold. So I want to just pause there, because this is like a important fork in the road, and just see if there are any questions on that before we go through kind of the rest of the flow chart on this.
Zoe, I had a question. We have a GIS expert who works at a Town Hall, and we just recently got a calculation of 61 total acres.
Yeah, I talked with Tim about this beforehand. So this is, what we're showing here is just the raw calculation of station area, and what you're talking about is the first draft of developable station area. So within that 74, how many of those acres could be considered developable? So again, are like private land that doesn't have, you know, like conservation restrictions on it, or other things like that, isn't a public right-of-way? So in reality, your developable station area is even less than 74, but at most is 74. So even, even without going into more detail of, of what the, the GIS specialist in, for your town went through, we already know that you're not going to be in that commuter rail category.
Right, understood, but we may be asked by, you know, in the courts, what exactly is our developable area? So you're saying you have calculated it to be 61 acres is developable?
So we, we haven't done that calculation, because we stopped here at, you know, if, because we saw.
Right, and I get the logic on that, yeah. So again, I'm sorry, the difference that you were saying, the difference.
They said 74 acres.
74 acres. And Alan Bishop agreed with that?
He says 61.
He said 61.
But they're not calculating the same thing.
Okay.
I think is what Zoe was saying.
So it's good.
Yeah, so if you, if I kind of walk through here, so
Sure.
70, if you think of it like, as kind of like, I guess layers is maybe the best way to think of it. So the first layer is, is it within half a mile of the station and also in Milton? So if you're asking that question, just, is it half a mile of the station and in Milton, you get 74. If you're going to be precise, it's like, I think, 73.7.
Okay.
So that meets those two criteria. And then you need to add the final criteria, which is, is it developable? And that's the criteria that your town GIS specialist has added on top of the two criteria that we're showing here. And so they're getting a smaller number, which makes sense, because they're considering all of those street right-of-ways that need to be removed. Those aren't developable. They're going to be streets. You can't put a house there. Any like DCR, public land, public conservation land needs to get taken out of there. So in other words, both numbers can be right. They're, they're representing different levels of detail to the calculation.
So you would be able to further break that down, those 61 acres, or your 74, and tell us exactly the amount of developable land? And we don't need it tomorrow, but.
Well, Alan.
We could, but I don't think it's worth doing, because it doesn't, it won't change your category, because the 74 is as high as it could get.
Right.
And that 74 is too small for you to be in the commuter rail category. And as soon as you're not in the commuter rail category, station areas don't matter at all. You're, there's no station areas that you have to plan around. You're just trying to meet a number of units and have a contiguous district and meet your minimum acreage. So you no longer need to think about transit area at all.
I, and I, I completely understand that. But what the statute says is, the statute says how many developable acres. So I think we just need, as a town, we need to be able to answer, how much is developable? Even though it's under, we know it's under 100, because the statute has specific language about developable acres. I just think we need to be able to answer that, so I would, I would appreciate it if you could provide that calculation at some point. Just because that is what is in, legally, what, that is what is stated, developable land.
Yeah, and I sort of agree. I think it would be just to confirm. It's, it's just confirming what our staff here at Town Hall has provided us. So it's like, just to back up. So I think it could be, I think it's useful to have.
I mean, it's something we can do. If you all agree and the, the town staff agree, we can do it. I just don't think it's worth the money from my professional opinion, because it doesn't, it won't change the state's interpretation. It doesn't play any role in, in how you'd get categorized, because this calculation alone throws you out of this category. But I, I'm, I'm happy to do it if it's something that you all would like to see.
I think because legally, that's what we're going to be asked. Yeah, legally, this is, we're in.
But if we're asked that, why wouldn't we just rely on Alan Bishop's calculation for it? I guess, can we put a pin on it and hold it and come back and, and see the rest of the analysis?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, but I, I would ask, yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? The 404 developable station areas for rapid transit? When you back out the 74, that puts us down around 330, right?
That's the, so, that's the difference. So the, what you're being held to right now is related to that 404 acres of developable station area, which the state calculated for you. You're correct that the difference between that and the number that we're showing for the, like a commuter rail, like testing the commuter rail category scenario, the difference between those two numbers, but that, that difference doesn't mean anything, because it's kind of comparing apples and oranges.
Well, they added in the commuter rail areas to the rapid transit area to get that 404, right?
The, the state ran these numbers, but my understanding is that the, the developable station area is calculated relative to all stations that are categorized as stations in the law, which means they're related to rapid transit, commuter rail, and selectively bus, meaning basically the Silver Line, which functions almost like a, a rapid transit or commuter rail service.
I got you, okay.
Jim, the, the other thing is that it's not just the commuter rail area subtracted from the rapid, subtract from the total, because around Cape and Street and Blue Hills Parkway, there's overlap, so there's commuter rail, and frankly, that's the bulk of the commuter rail area is also within Matapan Station, so it's, it's, you know, you're subtracting, you know, Smith Road and Big Blue Drive from 404 in that case.
Yeah, but I remember hearing early on that if we get below 400, it's somehow advantageous to us. It bumps us into a lower category or something. it's somehow advantageous to us. It bumps us into a lower category or something happens below 400 acres. So I was just hoping we could take out the commuter rail areas.
So I think.
Find four acres somewhere.
You might be, I'm sorry. You might be thinking of this 100 acres.
No, I'm not. I'm thinking of below 400. That's okay, I'll find it.
I can tell you with great confidence, this is the only threshold that is acreage based that relates to whether or not you're considered a commuter rail community. So there might be another parameter that you're talking about that has to do with, for instance, the difference between adjacent community and adjacent small town. That's another important distinction.
Could be that one.
But it wouldn't be about the commuter rail area. It'd be about your, your total town size.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And that'll come up in the next one. And JT will kind of walk through this next level of detail because he, he really got down into the weeds with it and he'll, he'll do a better job than me. But I, we'll, we'll get to those numbers that make the difference between adjacent community, adjacent small town.
Thank you, Zoe.
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions on the station area bit before we jump to the next set of sort of forks in the road? Okay, great. So I'm going to pass it off to JT. And we'll go through, you know, what the logic is for you right now and then what the logic would be if we take this sort of re-categorizing or reframing the Matapan Trolley as if it was a bus.
Thanks, Zoe. Yeah, this will hopefully just be kind of a summary of what Zoe was walking us through spatially in the town. And in answer to the last question about the threshold of 400, just to reiterate what Zoe said, you're right, it does put you in a different category for the percentage of developable station area that must be within the rapid transit, like the 0.5 mile rapid transit area, which as a commuter, since you're not, since theoretically, you wouldn't be in a, you wouldn't be a commuter rail, which we'll go through right now, that, that becomes irrelevant regardless, right? Because you're no longer, you're going to be categorized in this hypothetical scenario as an adjacent community, which means like the station area requirement becomes irrelevant, as Zoe said. So this is why, based on the flow chart of, of the, of the 3A compliance kind of logic, the first kind of, the first question is, you know, does your community have within its borders at least 100 acres of developable land within a half a mile of a rapid transit station? Under the current kind of logic with the trolley, you know, Milton is categorized as that and therefore it has this capacity requirement of 25% and a minimum land area of 50 acres. And then, so the, the alternate scenario that we're going to run through now is, you know, if, if we kind of hypothetically categorize the, the trolley as a bus and therefore you don't have 100 acres, the next question becomes, you know, does a community have within its borders at least 100 acres of land that's within a half a mile of a commuter rail? And as Zoe just kind of walked us through, we don't. It's 74 acres max, and that includes streets and undevelopable, you know, protected lands. And so the answer to that would be no. And then, so that, you know, that leads us to the third kind of criteria is, does the community have with less than 100 acres of developable area? And one of the following kind of population thresholds, with one being a density of 500 persons per square mile or a population of not more than 7,000 of year-round residents. The answer to that is no. And so that would put Milton in the adjacent community category, which is a, which is a 10% requirement of 2020, of the 2020 housing stock. So that's the main kind of, that's the main criteria difference that, that would apply. Under this scenario, we would go from 25% of your 2020 housing stock to 10%. And that's a pretty, that's a pretty drastic drop in, in the minimum requirement for, for capacity. It goes from like 2,000, you know, it goes from like 2,200, right, to.
980.
980, or 2,500 to 980. So hopefully that makes, you know, sense, at least to the broad strokes.
Go on that. Any, any questions on this? This is like a, a little bit like a multiple choice question in a test or something. And it's like designed to be a little confusing.
Yes.
No, I think that's very clear.
It's good.
All right, you want to take us home, JT, for the last one here?
Sure, yes. And so kind of one more thing to note, another caveat that, just, you know, for your, for all of our kind of edification on, on just how complicated this, this model gets. So there's another kind of element to determining multifamily unit capacity. It's, they, the, 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 the number is whichever is higher of two possible kind of calculations. One is the designated percentage of housing stock, given your category, which, you know, in your current case is 25%. In this hypothetical scenario, it would be 10%. Or the minimum gross density of 15 units per acre multiplied by this minimum land area requirement. And so, you know, in that, that's, I guess that's just to kind of try to cover scenarios in which towns would be kind of not very dense, is what I'm imagining. Maybe Zoe can help me kind of walk through that theoretically. But in, in the case of Milton, that number is 785, which is, you know, 200, exactly 200 less than 985. So the number is indeed 985. That's, that's the mark to hit as an adjacent community for, for Milton.
Any questions on that, anyone?
Wait, why wouldn't we be 785?
So the number, the, the, this part of the kind of the model, the, the number that gets, the number that is chosen is the higher number of those two, of those two calculations. It's, yeah. Yeah.
So in this world, you'd basically be planning for the same minimum land area, which for all of our scenarios, the land area has not been an issue at all. We've always well exceeded that. Your, your minimum multifamily unit capacity would drop way down. More than half of the, you know, the current kind of multifamily unit capacity that we're aiming for would, would no longer be necessary. You'd be aiming for 985 units. You would not have any requirements related to station area. So the location within the town would no longer matter, according to the model. The only thing that kind of still remains that has that sort of geographic element to it is this contiguous requirement. So it basically means you can't just split the districts up to be scattered all over. You need to have kind of a center of gravity that is a single contiguous area that is at least 50% of the, the sort of, the total area of the districts that you're looking at. So I think what, what this kind of means is you'd be looking at a scenario where you're including way less land in your overall district to achieve compliance. So it'd be similar densities. You'd have to make sure all of them are kind of balancing out with one another. But you'd be zoning way less land, but you have to make sure that you keep, you hold on to that contiguous, you know, 50% center of gravity. And that's the, the thing that would probably be most challenging in that scenario is, is finding, you know, where would that center of gravity be? But that's kind of, this is, gives you the kind of the, the two, the two different pictures of how you might sort of be approaching compliance for Milton. Any last questions on that? It seems like that's.
So what would be 50% of the total area that would apply?
So like, for instance, in the, in the option one N, the option that came before town meeting at the end of last year, the, what was getting us to the 50% was the set of districts that sort of flanked the Elliott Street corridor. There were enough districts that were all touching one another, were all contiguous with one another, that they counted as, you know, they collectively, they were 50% of the area of all of the sub-districts that were included in this overlay.
Yeah, so no, in this new, not looking back, but moving forward.
Yeah, so you, we haven't like done any work around, you know, where might these districts be? Or like what might, you know.
No, just how many acres? So the district.
So if your minimum land area is 50, you'd have to have like at least 25 acres. You know, a little bit more than 25 acres in this contiguous.
Of 25 acres.
Yeah, one of them has to be at least 25 acres. It'd have to actually be a little bit more probably because at least how we've been doing this so far, a lot of, we're aiming to get kind of as close to that 15 units per acre as possible, which tends to mean that you end up zoning a little bit more land at that lower density. So it's prob, functionally, it probably would have to be a little bit more than that 25 because unless you were trying, unless you started to zone things at a higher density than what we've been looking at so far as a group, just to kind of set expectations. But from a technical standpoint, like it has to, 25 is the lowest that it could get and still meet that requirement. But in reality, it would probably be larger than that.
And so ju, just to kind of clarify things, you know, for the adjacent community, you know, scenario, the, the minimum, the minimum size is there, 50 acres. The, if we're trying to hit the minimum multifamily unit capacity, that's about 20 units per acre, 985 units in 50 acres, it's 19.7. So if you think about how we kind of went through, the Elliott Street corridor is relatively not dense. And so we've got to crank up the density sort of elsewhere. You know, that dynamic still exists unless you're ready to do a 50 acre district at 20 units per acre. So there's still going to be those sort of peaks and valleys on, on, on sort of the, the low end and the high end. And then, you know, Maggie, to kind of your question, you know, it's, a, a, a district has to be at least 25 acres. My instinct here, based on the previous conversations that we've had around this, is that our total district size is going to be more than 50 acres. Because again, you know, 50 acres of 20 units per acre is, you know, a, a, a sort of a building type that we're not really accustomed to here in town. And so there's going to be a demand for a little bit less density in certain places.
Yeah, so like, for instance, if you are trying to just ride that 15 units per acre as close as you could get it, you'd be looking at zoning something more like 66 acres in order to get those 985 units at 15 units per acre. So that, realistically, that's probably, we'd be looking at zoning more like 66 acres because it's been a priority thus far to kind of stay close to that, not, not exceed the 15 units per acre by much as a, as an overall target.
So I thought as an adjacent community, you could put the districts anywhere.
Mm-hmm, as long as you still have that, that center of gravity somewhere.
As long as you have 25, the other 25 could be anywhere, as long as it's five acre minimum.
Yeah, that's not right. So it's kind of a whole, whole new puzzle.
Well, I was going to say, just so we're clear, it's not a static 25. It's half of whatever your total district is. So as Zoe was saying, like, if we do something that's 66 acres, 33 of those acres have to be contiguous.
Right, yeah.
If we go up to 100 acres, 50, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
The 25 is the minimum.
Yeah.
Great.
This is all under the guidelines.
Some wheels are, are turning. You're starting to think through some ways to, to do this. But I, you know, I think if there's any questions, we're happy to stay and, and clear those up. Otherwise, we can release you to, you know, the, the remaining of the kind of prep work that you're doing around the different sub-districts.
Yep, all right. Any other questions, Sean, or? Anyone else?
No, I, I, this is very helpful.
Yeah, I'm glad, yeah, this was, was kind of, in a weird way, it was a fun puzzle for us because we've just been handed these numbers by the state running the calculation. So now JT really knows the backend.
Yeah, right.
And just to, before you guys leave, just before we leave, to go back to what Meredith's request was, was to, to fine tune the 74 acres. Yeah, and confirm our GIS specialist acres. It would just be nice to get confirmation.
Sure, yeah.
And whenever you can, you know, that's, that would be great.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, Jim, on that question? Can I just ask how long they think it would take them to do it? So we know what the cost is to do it.
JT, what do you think it would be? I mean, we'd have to kind of run through the parcel data and make sure that we're identifying the, which parcels have, and I think that's, that's basically, that's in the parcel layer from the state. But we'd have to do some, some kind of slightly more manual calculations there. And then we'd have to do a, like a spatial join to remove the street right of ways, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's, it's not going to be too costly. Yeah, and I, and I'm, I'm happy to do it, yeah. I'm not sure.
I think like a day of work.
Sure.
Maybe, and forgetting exactly what hourly rate we have you at. But I guess it's probably like, probably under $1,000.
It may be really vital information that.
Sure, I'm happy to do it. And I'm, I'm not sure what your GIS crew on your end, exactly what data they were using, if they were using the MBTA official, like, shape files or. So it might, it might be different, but it, it, it should, you know, that, that, that difference sounds about right. About 15 acres lost due to right of way and mainly right of way, I'm imagining. So it should be in the 60-ish range, I'm, I'm guessing.
Yeah, there's some DCR property, particularly around Matapan Square.
And our, Alan Bishop was able to provide all the detailed parcels within that? So it seems like maybe that might be some of the work.
Like, to get to the final number, we have to do that anyway, so we might as well give it to you.
So he could, yeah. So Tim, you could maybe provide that for utility? Make it easier and, and coordinate between Alan Bishop. Is that okay, Tim? All right, thank you, that's.
Right, I think we've got our, our, our follow-ups. And if there's anything else that comes up, we'll circle back with Tim about, you know, any decisions made in today's meeting that we should do some follow-up on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thanks all.
Okay, thank you all.
So long.
Thank you.
Good night.
So did we authorize them to work on a 10% plan? How did that just happen?
We did.
What did I miss? We did?
That's, we told them, yeah, we need to work on.
To look at a 10% as well?
Yeah, that that's going to be something that we're going to be working towards.
Okay.
Having various scenarios, so.
Good enough.
Yeah. Okay, so where we left off, we have done, we've sort of given a, we're working on our scorecard. We've gone through the Milton Station East, Granite Avenue North, Granite Avenue South. This has been really an interesting exercise to go through as we're, as we're working towards this. So our next, so if we've done those, moving, are we on, I guess, Elliot, the Elliott Street corridor would be the next. Like, bridge. Oh, we did, we did the bridge? Did we do the bridge?
It doesn't look like we did the bridge.
No, so that we should do the bridge next because I think that'll be sort of going from east to, east to west.
So the bridge, if we have them.
Can we pull the scorecard up? Is that, was that helpful to do that up on the screen? Did people like that or does it not matter?
Yeah, I like, I like being able to see the whole thing.
The, the, the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I know it's impossible.
And Tim was trying to fill in. You were doing a great job, Tim.
So just, just to be clear, the bridge is.
That's Milton Hill House?
And it's also 131 Elliott, 136 Central, right?
No, that's west.
136 Central, yeah.
No, so it's just.
Just, just the Milton Hill House parcels.
It doesn't include Steel and Rye Building?
No, those are done.
So just the Milton Hill House and that new development. So just the Milton Hill House and that new development next door to it, on the same side of the street?
Yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to look at this tiny map.
What is that, 50 Elliott, Tim? What's the name of the address of that new one?
It's, it's, one is 36 Elliott, the other is 50 Elliott.
50, yeah, okay, cool, thank you.
So, so let's see, allowed height is comparable. And the, what's existing at? Um. We have that, right?
Yeah, let me see, I think I have that, um.
I have it too. Granite Ave South Bridge, existing unit estimate, um, this would be 14.9 acres, amount of capacity. So.
185.
50 Elliott, it's four stories, right? They're both four-story buildings.
But we're doing Milton Hill House.
Yeah, so the existing buildings are four stories.
Yep.
And what we have for the bridge is?
We're like live, right? That's Tim and you.
I don't think I'm on here, that's true.
There you are, Jim.
Yep, let me see if I have. Tim, I don't, can you, would you be able to pull up a shared screen of the height and dimensions and unit capacity? So we could view both, um, I don't know if that's, because I don't, I did not bring my.
I, I'd have to.
I think, I'm trying to find my sheet too, and I'm not finding.
Yeah, I'd have to find that document. I don't have that at my fingertips right now.
Okay.
Alright, let me just find maybe.
I have unit capacity, but I don't have the height.
Did we put that at four or four and a half stories? It's certainly not higher, so I guess what I would say, I think it's comparable. But if we were looking for the exact.
I think we did, it was comparable. I don't know how much.
Yeah, I think, I've just found it here. Okay, so bridge, we have it four and a half stories. And the existing buildings are four stories. So I would give that a five.
Mm-hmm.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Alright, and then? Then as we s-
So compared to the existing in the district, a five, because I think there's other four-story, four and a half story buildings there. And then height is comparable to multifamily in parts of town, that's. In that area specifically, parts of town.
The building size is comparable. I think we set the FAR here also to be similar, so the bridge FAR. Sorry, I don't have that, it's readily at my fingertips. I would say we set, again, we set these to be comparable, so I would.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, and the existing FAR in these. It's a little funky because they're, the one on top has a low, low FAR because it has a lot of land area associated with it. And the one closer to the street has a smaller land area associated with it, so it's FAR is higher. If you average them out, I think you, we, we'd end up comparable to what's in the, in the zoning. But let me find it.
Did, did we do A2 already?
We did.
What did we, what did we put for that?
A five.
For the height, for A2?
I thought that's what we were on.
Is, is comparable to existing multifamily parts of town, four and a half stories, particularly in that, in that area.
We're not having a problem with a five for that one, but I just thought that's what we were on.
Yeah, I, that might, I might be a four on that.
Which one?
A2.
A2.
And why, why is that? I'm just curious.
Because it tends to be, it tends to be more in this part of town that you find those heights.
Except these are up against single families. And that was a big consideration when they were, when that was, the ZBAP approved that, there's a single family right next to it. And then behind it, there's, you probably remember hearing from neighbors who live on, I guess that would be.
Morton Terrace?
Can't Nav.
Wait, this is still Milton Hill House.
I understand, but the behind, at the backside of Milton.
Right.
Hill House are single families.
Right, right.
And on the side of Milton Hill House, um, you know, it's not just the street-facing, but there's a side part that's up against Morton Terrace.
Right.
And there's single families there, whereas if you look at, um, where we talked about.
Lower the number and make it less.
Oh, I see, okay.
And making it not.
Okay, so you want to make it a four, okay, I got you, alright.
Because it is, we want to be sensitive, and that might be area that we, if we could take it down, we might want to take that down.
Okay, I understand.
And allowed building size is comparable to existing, I would say.
So that's where I'm trying to get to the FAR.
So can, can I, can I, can I, who's, who's editing this? Is it me or is it somebody else?
Oh, sorry.
Well, it's all three of us.
I adjusted all the columns so that I could see Milton Station Bridge on the same page as Guiding Principles, but.
I think we're best to have Tim do it.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it was exclusive to me. I didn't realize I'm out there.
Oh, you've got it open. You need to have a copy.
I guess, yeah.
You need to have a copy.
I'll have to find a copy here.
Yeah, Tim, if you, if you could fill it in, that would be great.
No, no, I just, I, I'm, I'm seeing someone around. I thought there was a ghost.
My mad computer skills took over.
So what I would say is, we have a, I think this is, right, and Milton Central Ave Station, is that? That's, is that the bridge or not? No. So what's called, what's the bridge called in?
Bridge.
That's what we're on, that's, that's the two Elliott Street parcels, right?
But is it called Bridge in the, in the, in the zoning? Because I don't find Bridge in the zoning. Isn't it called Milton slash Central Ave?
There are, there are three districts. One of them is the Central Ave Business District, one of them is the Milton Village Business District, and Milton Station Bridge is the parcels that connect them, and those are the, those are the two ones. I'll bring this up on the map.
No, I'm, I'm trying to find it in, I'm trying to find it in the zoning, which I don't find in the zoning.
Right now, we're talking about Elliott Street, right?
Yeah.
50 and 36.
Correct, that's it.
No, Milton, we're not even.
Milton Hill.
We're Milton Hill House.
Because if I, if I look at.
Yeah.
That's Elliott.
We're not even talking about 50?
Not yet. That's part of the Elliott Street corridor.
50 Elliott?
On this map.
50 Elliott Street is not what we're discussing right now? I'm sorry, I'm, I could have swore that.
It's the two Milton Hills.
Yeah, 36 and 50 Elliott Street.
Right, that's Milton Hill.
Yeah, old and new Milton Hill.
Is all we're talking about right now, right? Yeah, okay.
But what I'm, I'm trying to find is the FAR that was included for that. And when I look in here, I don't find Bridge as a category. This was what was approved, and so that, I'm trying to find it somewhere.
The warrant is incorrect.
Are you looking, are you looking at your screen?
And also our net new is incorrect.
I was looking at the warrant. Is that what you have open?
Yes.
What page then?
So there, there, the, it's Section E, Milton Central Ave Station Sub-District, okay?
Right.
And then the, the differentiations between east-west and Bridge are made in the dimensional tables.
Alright, that's why I wasn't finding it. That's why I kept asking about the. Is it, what's included in here?
So it's the same FAR standard for all three districts.
And it's a one, right?
Yes.
Alright, so if, what I'm getting on, 50 Elliott is a .82, and 36 Elliott is a .27. So I guess that I would say this, I would put this as a four also, because it's a higher FAR.
Yeah, because I'm getting the, the bridge, the 185 units at a density of 38.9 compared to what currently exists, 14.9. So we don't have a lot of. Well, capacity, yeah, we don't have a lot of 185 unit buildings. So a, I would say a four, I mean, it has a lot of land area in potential.
What are you reading there?
Um, this is what the model, um, existing unit, there's 68 units currently existing there, which is an average of 14.9 units per acre. Um, what is being proposed is the potential, potential for 185 units at 38.9.
One thing I would say about that though, Meredith.
I'm sorry, what did you?
That's the, that's the document that I prepared. But what I would say about that is Milton Hill, like the fifth, the one closest to the street, which I think is 50. I looked at that building a while ago, um, it's mostly large, two-bedroom units. So would you, when we're thinking about building size, you know, the, the model says 1,000 square feet, which is gross. So you're looking at something that's more like 850 net by the time you take corridors and stairs and elevators out. So you're looking at a lot more units in the same square footage because they're smaller units. So that's why building size, I think it's important to think about FAR, because that's the total size of the building. So that's why I said, if the FAR that exists is an average of the .82 and the .27, and we're, we put it as a one, then I think, um, you know, it's not, we pulled, we put it at something higher, that's higher than what's there now. So I wouldn't give it a five, but I'd say, I mean, I would give it a four.
Mm-hmm.
I would, that's, and this is where the FAR and the unit size is important, because most of our multifamily is large units. It's the same at 88 Worf. Even at 131 Elliott, the units are large by what's, the standards that I'm seeing, um, in, in projects.
So is that what you prepared for town meeting or for?
No, this is for us, that I've been wanting to get to.
Which we'll get to, yeah, I just was working off of something we haven't gotten there.
Have we gotten this yet? I guess I'm confused.
Yeah.
Did I, okay, so it's somewhere in the.
And I can share this when we get, if we get, I don't know if we'll get to tonight.
I don't know if we'll get to it tonight either, but, um.
Could you share it to me?
I, I think I sent it, or.
You probably did.
I'm pretty sure I sent it, so if you do a search from me, if not, I'll send it.
We'll ask if, yeah, if, um, this can be resent to everybody.
And I've been looking for what, the presentation I did at town meeting.
It's just included.
Okay, it's all good.
The presentation I did at town meeting was actually the comparisons of, um, what we're trying to do. And I'm, I'm, I thought I had each sheet printed out, and I don't, but I will pull up that presentation while we go through this.
Alright, so we have A2 is four, A3 is four.
Right, um.
A4, I would say three, um, because that's comparable.
I would say, you know, um, four stories for multifamily in other parts of town, excluding the 40Ps. I mean, this is the part of town that really has them.
So that's why it's some parts of town, but not others. That's why I think we ended up with a three on the Milton Station East. It was sort of a neutral, because East Milton Square doesn't have four stories, except for, we'll have one, but that's not typical. But it is typical of this area.
Yeah, so Milton Station East.
Parts of town, it's saying it's two parts of town, so that would be four, I guess.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking about the threes that we gave Milton Station East and how we're giving Bridge higher. They really all should be the same, you know, so I think they're all factored the same. The, the thinking and the numbers that were all the same. So it's like, to me, Milton Station East, West and Bridge, you know, I'm not sure why we would have three on East and four on Bridge, now that I'm thinking about it again.
I think it was because of conversation, some parts of town, you know, is it allowed height is comparable?
Because six stories is, is probably not as common as four, maybe, is what the thinking was.
Yeah, that's probably was our logic.
Okay.
Which would make sense.
And so.
Yeah, the middle buildings that. So I think it's okay to put four on this.
Okay, and then allowed building typology is comparable to existing, that I would say is a five. Required open space at 40%, we have here, right? On Milton Hill. I'm just looking at the open space. So lot coverage. For 50 Elliott, 22%.
That would be different, very, I think, different than what exists.
Yeah, I think probably there's more open space existing that, by some pers, by some amount, but I'm not sure. Because of two different buildings, there's more open space on the one up, uh, up high than there is down below. So maybe this is a four instead of a five.
And I think maybe the one in front was allowed to be less open space because of the one behind. So if we allowed the one behind to be as big as the front, there goes the open space. And I think that changes both those buildings.
Yeah, the 40% that's required, so would have to be in, in those, um, if they were done separately, that front one couldn't really be redone in the way that it's done, because it doesn't have 40%, right? So that one would be not redeveloped. So the one in the back, if it's redeveloped, just have to do the 40%.
Yeah.
So I would say, you know. I don't know, maybe it is a five then, instead of a four.
Yeah, because the front one works because of the back open space.
Alright, so a five. I'm fine with that. Alright, and then district includes area with significant tree coverage. And we, we're giving the others a five because it didn't have tree coverage, so I think we do the same thing here, right? On the density per acre. You can get to this minimum with this, right? So that's why we gave it a five. The same with the unit capacity.
I'm looking at this, district includes area with significant tree coverage, that, that should not be a five. Because we want.
No, because we're giving it a high point because it doesn't. Remember, we talked about this last time?
It doesn't.
It's counterintuitive, but.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, that's right, that is the logic, I'm like.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It, I know, I know what you're, it's confusing.
We have to remind ourselves at the beginning of every meeting.
Yes, we have to remind ourselves, right?
Okay.
As Tim reminded us last time, you want the points to be there because there isn't tree coverage, right? And then the sub-district size here. We gave the other five, but it's not big enough on its own, right? This isn't big enough, just like Granite Ave North wasn't big enough on its own. So we gave Granite Ave, Granite Ave North a three. So it seems like we would have to give a three here too, because it depends on it being attached with some other districts to make the acreage, right? Same, it was the same logic anyway.
Yeah, isn't Granite Ave five, though?
Not, not for sub-district size?
Density per.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
On north.
Are you on B1?
Tim's still on B, it's still, Tim's still on B1.
I'm on B1 too, Tim.
I'm, I'm.
Cheryl's on B3.
That would be five, I would say five.
Five, five and three. Yeah, you're right, I jumped ahead.
So that would be, yeah, are we in agreement, five, five?
Five, five, three.
Yeah.
Five or three sounds good.
Sorry, I'm having to scroll back and forth too, so.
Alright, I just want to make sure I.
So what are we on, B1?
Tim, so that was B1, two and three is five, five and three.
Alright, and then existing land use is single family, we change that N to a five, right? Because it's not a single family. The land is vacant, which it's not. So that means we give this a one, I think, because, maybe it's not, maybe we give this something in between because the building in back is old, but it's not vacant. So I guess we give it a one. And then this one, the next one's maybe the building value is high. The one in the back's going to be less valuable, right? So maybe we give this a three.
So, Tim, you need to change C1 to five.
Yeah, sorry, I keep doing, thank you for keeping track.
He's slow.
Wouldn't one on the back be worth more because it's denser? So if you were to remodel it, you would be able to get more square footage out of it? So wouldn't that give it a higher number?
Yeah, that's why existing building value is high. So what do we do?
I'm thinking the Milton Hill House, there's a really large parking lot, which is technically vacant, like half, so half of, there's some of it is, I would consider not utilized, but...
Yeah, so the one in front's brand new, so we don't think that's really going to get read.
Right.
So this is all one district, so we have to factor that one building's old and one is new. That's kind of why I was giving it a three.
Yeah, no, three's good.
So five, one, three?
But I think on the next one, Meredith, district has parcels and/or buildings of adequate size to allow additional units without demolition. I think that's true. If you redeveloped that back building, you might have smaller units in there or even do an addition to it. So I think this one can, you could go with a five. So that's the C4, right?
Yeah. Or a four.
All right, I'm fine with the four there, Tim.
A four, yeah, it's not... Okay. So that was five, one, three, four for Cs. Right?
I think what we were, Milton Station East, were we mostly thinking about the extra space storage building, I guess, probably?
All right, and the mill, yeah, the mill buildings and the Bank of America building.
So this, the next is historic, so these are not historic. So I would say each of these is a five, right?
Well, the back building, when was that built? I mean, in terms now, it could be considered historic because it's 50 years old.
All right, our historical commission number.
I would not say that is.
I think it's worth saving.
But I think the Hayward, is Hayward photography included in this? No, it's so...
This is just Hill House.
Yeah, this, no, then that's...
I would say...
There used to be, sadly, the old, the original Milton Hill House, which was a hotel, was a beautiful old house. It used to be there. It was sort of where people would stop on their horses on their way from Boston out to the country.
Cool.
Very cool.
So Maggie, are you good with a five here? On all of the historic, is everybody good with a five?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Then we get to zone larger non-residential parcels to prevent displacement. We said we were going to come back to these, right, that are in yellow.
To prevent displacement of residents or what do we prevent, what displacement?
No, this was the parcel size?
Because if the larger parcels that are non-residential, it means that existing residential are not impacted. So I guess displacement's really just a term that references that. I mean, I suppose one could say commercial businesses are displaced, we could think about changing that.
I think that's what we talked about.
Yeah, but I do think that the idea here was the parcel size. And I think we said, we highlighted these in yellow saying we're going to have to come back and rethink this a little bit because of the way it's laid out with these parcel sizes and the numbers of parcels. So I think we should, again, tonight, just skip over this category.
This is a category that isn't really scoring, this is real more data.
Yeah, exactly. So then we go to take advantage of existing multifamily housing. So instead of the Y, this is multifamily, existing land use is, so I'd say we give this a five instead of the Y. And then this actually, the existing zoning is not, this is permitted under special permit through the Board of Appeal, not through zoning. So I'd say this gets a lower, I don't know what lower number we want to give it, but maybe a two? That makes sense. Mixed-use zoning process underway.
We've already done the overlay and...
This is not in that overlay? I don't believe it's in any of the, is this in the Central Ave overlay though, Tim? It's not in the Milton Village?
Neither.
Neither. So then this gets a low number also for this.
It'd be a one.
Density level matches existing. This is that funny thing about unit size. So I'd say it kind of goes back to the building. What did we do for building size? We gave it a four. So I think I would give it a four here. Does everyone agree?
Yep, that's fine.
Yep, I would say. And then dimensional standards match existing. I think that's probably a five. Design guidelines in place. No, there's not any here. So I guess that's a one. And this again is a one if we're matching what we did. Right? And then access to the trolley within a half mile, that's a five. And then NA.
What did we do for six and seven? I'm sorry.
One and ones. Sure you don't want me to drive?
And then we have a five for G1. And two and three get NAs. And then the bus lines.
Charlie, you're going way too fast. What was G2?
NA.
NA and then NA for both two and three.
Okay. Bus lines, there's bus lines there.
There's bus lines, yeah.
So I'd say five. Bike path, half mile, that's a five. Sidewalks.
Five.
Five. School within a half a mile. How far did we say Glover was?
Glover, but that might be a little further than a half mile. It's up Canton.
All right, so...
Three probably.
Maybe a three. I'm fine with that. Shops, cafes, et cetera, this is high, I'd say five. And then amenities within a mile, that's probably a five too. Are we good, Tim?
Yep.
All right. Mixed use required. This is where we have it required or is it just at Central and?
Yeah, I don't think we could have it here.
So here we have NA and then five, right? We're allowing it.
Did they convert that, the restaurant in Milton Hill to a condo? Did they take that over?
Yeah, there's nothing there right now.
Yeah.
That is a shame. There's nothing there at all, it's an empty?
Yeah.
That was a nice little restaurant.
It was the only restaurant in town.
For a long time.
We had, after my father passed away, that's where we had the reception.
We were so excited to go out to dinner in Milton Hill House.
So the next one's a five though, Tim, because it's allowed, right? Everybody agree it's a five on H2?
Sure.
Yes.
Yep, I'm good with it.
And then affordable housing potential, because this is a five for I1, right?
Yep. Existing affordable housing, that NA.
There's a little bit there in that, in Milton Hill House, I think, so... Maybe a two?
Yeah.
There's not a lot of it there. This is the...
What about the new section? 50 Elliott didn't have any requirement for affordable?
The old part doesn't have any, so the new part does.
Oh, we were just talking, oh, okay.
So I don't, there's not a lot of units, that's why I gave it a two. So then I3, district includes unbuilt approved 40B, so that's NA. Unbuilt projects with affordable, NA. That brings us to J. Central to handle. Parcel frontage is on a two-lane road, which we're not giving a high number because two, this is a fairly congested area.
Really congested back, yeah.
Especially with steel and rye. So I would give this like a two.
Right, I would too.
Do you agree?
Yep.
And then NA on the four lane, right? If we're consistent with what we did on Milton Station East.
Doesn't exist, okay.
Right, and then...
Probably a study.
Non-state roadway. So I think we do, like we did on Milton Station East, we give it a one. And then hotspot.
One.
One. Although it's not quite as hot as Adams Street, so maybe a two.
Yeah, I guess that two is fine.
And there hasn't been any traffic studies for this section, so I'd say a one. Flood risk, I don't believe there's flood risk for these. So these are fives.
Five and five, okay.
All right.
Okay, so that concludes...
We have Milton Station West next?
Yes, see if we can move through that.
So that's Uncutty House. The height is the same.
Hey, can you total up that column, Tim?
It's a little funky because you've got those parcel size, you have to exclude.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's...
I think it's maybe better to wait to do the totals to get them, well, Tim's figuring it out, but he's more.
Now, this will include Hendry's, the gas station.
Oh, okay, Milton Station West, you're right.
Milton Station West.
Yes, you're right. Right, so Hendry's and gas station.
And steel and rye.
Steel and rye.
The cleaner, right? The dry cleaner next to it?
Does it go up to School Street?
In 36.
Like that?
Not quite that far, but it does, it's 36 Central.
Yeah.
That whole building, so that goes almost...
Yeah, but it doesn't go, those, those, yes, yeah, it doesn't go there.
Those really should be, are those anywhere? Those included in any? You've got to include those in the future if and when we ever change.
It's possible if we could, yeah, that's possible.
So 36 Central, and then what about like...
And across the street, Mr. Burks.
And it's the, where the new El Barrio, the old plate was.
Yep.
So really that Central Avenue little neighborhood.
Yeah, it's all of insurance.
Okay, so, well, this, so the allowed height being comparable, the allowed height is four and a half stories, right? And 131 Elliott.
Is four and five.
Is four to five.
36 Central is four.
But turns to five at the back with the topography. So what I would say is like, it's comparable to existing, you know, for some of the buildings and for some of the buildings it's higher. But, so maybe it's not a five, but maybe it's something like a four.
Because you've got the plate building, which is lower, and you've got, yeah, a couple of other two-story.
But those I think don't qualify because they're the minimum lot size.
Yeah.
So I'd say, I'd say a four.
Four, okay. I'm good with that.
Allowed height comparable to existing multifamily in parts of town. I would say that's a, we gave it... Probably a four, like we did with the bridge, I guess is what I'd say. Size, now, I'd say this is a five because 131 Elliott's FAR is 1.35 and 36 Central is 1.42. And we're allowing like 1.1, I think. So I would give this definitely a five.
Building size comparable.
I'd give this the four that we gave the bridge. Typology is a five. Building typology is a... Open space, I mean, this, there's more open space required here than there is in some of this existing, so I'd say a five. And a five because there's not much tree coverage here.
Although, you know what? I'm just looking at building typology is comparable to existing. It's sort of a mix, so it's, there's, there are definitely a couple of multifamily housing, but there's some that are just, you know, single-story commercials, so I would give that a four or three or four.
I wouldn't do a three.
And a four, but not a five.
Given we have fives for East and Bridge.
Yeah, I think, because I think that is more larger multifamily, but here it's some commercial, single-story, so...
All right, so a four.
A four.
On A6, you have that, Tim?
A5.
A5.
I'm sorry.
A5 would be four.
Wait, no, the typology, you did, sorry.
Yeah.
The typology did a four, okay. And then the open space is a five. Okay. And then the tree coverage is a five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we're on...
Density.
Density. I think... The density is a five because we're allowing for the 15, I think it's, if not, it's probably at this height and at this...
What do you have as the density for this area? I have 34.4 units per acre.
So as long as, what we're saying is not to exceed, do not exceed the requirements in the statute and guidelines. We gave the others five for density in this area.
These are smaller lot sizes though, so it's the unit size that counts higher?
Yeah, it's a little different because 131 Elliott...
There's so much land area there, this is a sort of a...
36 Central. We're really getting credit here just for 131 Elliott and 36 Central because the others are so small that they're... We're really getting credit here just for 131 Elliott and 36 Central because the others are so small that they're not, they don't meet their minimum lot size requirements.
Right.
So I think you have to think about it as being, getting the credit stuff. I think I would keep it with the fives of the others.
All right.
And the same with the unit capacity. And again, the sub-district, I think it has to be a three because it's not big enough on its own.
Tim, do you have that for B1, 2, 3? We've got 5, 5, 3.
Yes, it's, can you see that on the screen?
Great, thank you. Okay. Now, existing land is single-family.
So it's not, so that's a five because it's not. Land is vacant. I'd say that's a one because these are newly built buildings. Is everybody agreeing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Existing building value is high. These buildings are brand-new, so I'd give it a one. And district has parcels and are buildings of adequate size to allow additional units without demolition. There's really not a lot of capacity to add any units here because the, but this is the getting credit.
Well, steel and rye, you could...
Built on steel and rye.
Maybe steel and rye is the only one, I think, that was adequate size unless there's consolidation.
Three?
Three, it's fine.
What about the cleaners? Didn't we approve an ANR for the cleaners?
That would make them even smaller.
Yeah, so...
They wouldn't be too small.
But they wouldn't have to subdivide, they don't have to divide. They can if they want to, but they don't necessarily.
I think they were thinking about an opportunity to sell to the different businesses. All right, avoiding historic districts and parcels with historic structures, so...
There's nothing really...
Yeah, so I would say these are all fives. We skip E and get to F. So it is
Already Milton Ave.
Already, so that's a five. And the zone for this, that's a five.
36 Central is mixed use, yeah?
So mixed-use zoning is underway. It's a one, I guess, because it's already there, that's the way we handled the others.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah. So on F I have, F1 is five, F2 is five, F3 is one, is that what everybody has? Density level matches existing.
Four.
Okay. Dimensional standards match existing, so it's a four also because it matches the higher end. Design guidelines in place, there aren't any in this area. That's a one. And then it doesn't include unbuilt, so that's a one. Access to trolley, five. Within a mile is not applicable. Greater than a half, or greater than a mile is not applicable. Bus line is five. Bike path, five. Sidewalks, five. School, three. I'm just doing it the same as Bridge because it's pretty much the same. Amenities, five. Amenities within one mile, five. Mixed use required, it's required here, right? So that's a five. And then allowed...
It's not required, it's...
Tim, is it required here?
I thought, I thought this was one of our mandatory mixed-use districts.
So anything torn... Okay, sorry.
This is our only mandatory mixed use.
Yeah.
I thought the mandatory mixed use was going to be in the...
It's unhatched area there, I think, Meredith, if you look at your...
Yeah, east and west are mandatory mixed use.
Okay, great, all right, sorry. Yes, correct, all right.
Okay, so then allowed is NA. Density for affordable housing potential, the density allows for more than 10 units a parcel, so that's a five. District includes existing affordable, it does at both 131 Elliott and 36 Central. Again, not a ton of units, so maybe a three?
Three on that, yeah.
Unbuilt 40B is not applicable. Unbuilt approved, not applicable. Yep. We get down to vehicle, and I'd say it's the same as what we did for Bridge, so two lane is a two, four lane is not applicable. And then a one.
Frontage.
This is a little more busy, so I, I'm sorry, were you on J?
J3?
3, I gave a one. J4, I think this is a one also, or a two.
We had said two, yeah, it does get really, because you've got the people coming over the trolley right there, well...
Right.
I would say a two, I guess. There's worse hotspots, but it's bad.
And then, no, there are traffic studies that were done with those projects, but I'd give it a two maybe. And then flood risk. Well, then DePonta's right there. But I don't know if these are in the FEMA maps.
I've never seen flood, I'm not aware of it.
Sullivan Insurance Building is. I can't look for it as a fact, but if you look behind it...
You've got the stream that runs behind.
Yeah, the stream is right there, yeah.
I think that would be a very difficult site to build on.
Which one?
The Sullivan Insurance Building?
You would have to just build up, you couldn't...
But I mean, you're, at one point, your, your foundation is in the river, that little stream back there.
You can't, exactly, but it's...
I think you're, it's challenging to build there.
You wouldn't get a permit to tear it down and rebuild, that was the...
On the existing footprint.
Yeah.
So 131 Elliott's not in it. But 36 Central's, yes.
Yeah, you can see like the parking lot of 36 Central and the rear of that Stevie's building is kind of in the flood zone.
Oh, interesting, that's...
So then this is a three, some is and some isn't. So these, these both would get three, I guess. And we're right at 10 o'clock, Meredith.
Yeah, that was...
So that leaves us with Blue Hills Parkway, East Milton, and then locations that weren't in the final Article 1, but...
Yep, so we're almost through what we had previously gone through, so...
All right.
Were we gonna do Elliott Street ever?
Yeah, the Elliott Street corridor we have to do.
Yeah, well, we have Elliott and Blue Hills Parkway, right? Or East Milton, where's Elliott on...
And Matapan Station.
Sorry, they got scrunched here.
We do a few more. Blue Hills Parkway corridor, Matapan Station, Elliott Street corridor.
We got a lot more to do.
Yeah. And actually, East Milton Square, we haven't done.
So we have, so maybe we can set the goal of getting all of these done at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we can, I think...
We're getting better, we're getting better.
We're getting better. Well, at least we know when we should be consistent, right?
Exactly, no.
How we're applying the criteria, I think we're getting a better handle on.
Oh, here's all the FAA, this is what I was looking for.
That's what I was looking for too, and I had it open here again.
Yeah, I had it on the up, on the flip, it was on the back side, so...
I knew we had it, so...
This was the slide deck that Cheryl had put together. And maybe we can just have this sent out to everybody so everyone has it and
Yeah, please.
Julie was nice enough to print up a really nice copy, maybe?
Yeah, so maybe we can all have a copy because trying to have multiple documents open on the laptop is just hard.
Especially when we're all open at the same time.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome, just like that.
No, it really is so nice to be able to look and look at the maps and but there, I did have on the other side of that.
And I had it here too, and then here I am flipping through all of this.
And here I couldn't get my town website email.
And that was given to us or a town meeting, I'm sorry, I still don't...
I pulled that sheet
Couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
When I put this analysis together, I pulled that sheet that came from Util originally.
Util, okay.
Yeah, and I, but I highlighted a few things on it, but that, the underlying data is all came from them, which was, that led up to Article 1.
All right.
But I feel like we're moving forward.
Yeah, some of the other sheet is, is, is just stuff that I looked at separately from Article 1.
No, it looks awesome, thank you.
Yeah, no, very good. So if there's, is there anything else? If not, Tim, did you have anything before we have a motion to adjourn?
All set.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I will second.
All in favor, roll call. Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all, good night.
Thank you.